I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please, please. Roll call, please.
Councilmember John?
Here.
Councilmember Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Potem Power? And Mayor Pogan Corp.
Here.
Mayor Potem Power is absent tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have our invocation by Mr. Ed Stewart from the Church of the Latter Day Saints.
Our Father in Heaven, Father, we thank thee for the opportunity we have to gather here tonight. We thank thee for the prosperous city that we live in. We thank thee for the blessings you pour down upon us and upon our nation. Father, we ask of thee to assist us, to be guided and directed according to thy will. We ask thee to help us to choose peace in our differences, that contention can flee from our hearts and minds, that we can choose to interact with each other appropriately. Please help our nation to come to thee and to choose to be thy servants and thy people. And please help peace and peace to be within each of us. We thank thee for thy many blessings. We ask thee to continue to pour them out upon us, upon the city, upon the state, and this nation. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Phil, will you do the prayers, please?
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor Pogan Corp, council.
Good evening.
Before I get into, we're kind of in the bonus round tonight. You've got a small envelope with a little orange tag. Those are California poppy seeds. We had a member of our community donate 100 pounds of poppy seeds. They would love to see Tehachapi covered in poppies and have a beautiful bloom. This is the time of year, October through December, for planting. So they are individually prepping each of these envelopes from 100-pound sack. And we will be giving them away, City Hall will be giving away at the Breast Cancer Awareness Event, the Apple Festival will give some to Golden Hill CSD, Stallion Springs CSD, The Chamber, and TVRPD. They have all partnered within about 20 minutes of me sending one email this afternoon. I've got responses from all those organizations saying, yeah, we're going to make sure that we make these available. So that is courtesy of the Shaw family, who has paid for this, generously paid for this for the community. This is going to be fun. This is something that they'd like to do and have a beautiful May Bloom of California poppies. So they want to make sure that every family gets an opportunity to plant at home. And so it should be beautiful come springtime. So that's what those are. And then now we'll move into my item. October nationally is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, actually globally. So we ask mayor and council to proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month here in the city of Tehachapi. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a global campaign to raise awareness for breast cancer, increase screenings, and provide critical support for patients and survivors. Since 1989, increased awareness through campaigns like this have helped reduce breast cancer deaths in the United States by 44 percent. The key messages of Breast Cancer Awareness Month focus on early detection, primarily through regular mammograms, knowing your body, recognizing potential symptoms like lumps or skin changes, understanding lifestyle factors that can reduce risk, providing support for patients and their families, and raising funds for research and patient care. Wearing pink and spreading the word also helps to ignite those conversations. And providing everyone with a pink ribbon, thank you for putting those on. I've got some. We'll pass these around if anyone else in the audience would like a pink ribbon. We'd like to kind of kick it off tonight and just appreciate you displaying this ribbon to honor those that are fighting, have fought, or have lost that battle with breast cancer. Coming up this weekend, we've got something that we're very proud of. We are going to have a Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. And we ask people to arrive at Railroad Park about 8:00 AM. We'll probably start the walk 8:30, 8:45. And we will have a one-mile course and a two-mile course through downtown. Kind of a kickoff, if you will, of the Apple Festival. So you can come down and take away information, if you can share with a family, or whether it's for yourselves or a family, loved one, friend, or just to show support. So we ask you to join us. We also will have a butterfly wall. So we have right now currently through the month of October in City Hall, and also we'll have it at the event on Saturday as a wall. It's an oak tree, and you can put a butterfly to honor somebody that has battled. And so we invite you to stop by if you've got a loved one to put a name there just to help with that recognition. So we've already had people come in. To go along with that, we've got two commemorative Tehachapi hats with a pink ribbon. And this one, the women overwhelmingly picked this color. And then we've got this hat, but we're seeing a lot of women purchase the black one as well. $20 is the ask, and the profits from this are going to the Tehachapi Cancer Foundation and the AIS Cancer Foundation, two organizations that support local cancer patients in different ways, but it's important to support those organizations. Both of them will be there Saturday as well, but we've got these available in City Hall. Like I said, $20 apiece. So and before we move on and ask mayor and council to proclaim this month, I'd like to invite my wife Christine to come forward. Chris, Chris is five times battling. So I'd like to turn the mic over to you.
Hi, councilmembers and friends. Big hand for Kibet. But he's an amazing husband. More than anybody will ever know.
Not quite on script.
I just want to invite everyone out to the cancer walk tomorrow. I mean, we are not tomorrow, Saturday. See, already I'm forgetting. Be lovely to see everyone there. And if you don't know someone who has breast cancer, you probably will or experienced cancer some way in your life. And if you can't walk, that's okay. It's only a mile or two-mile course. There's comfy chairs. Ray has graciously volunteered to walk for everybody who cannot walk. Sign up and he'll do your miles for you. Bye. Thanks for your time.
So with that, Mayor Pogan Corp, council, if you'd like to come forward, we'd like to proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Obviously, council or anyone has anything to say? We're here to answer questions or?
Well, thank you, and everybody in this room has had some ones themselves, friends, affected by cancer, excuse me. But it's a very emotional topic for me. I haven't had cancer, but know of many, many people that have. And I pray for a cancer cure every night, more than once. And hopefully, they've made some progress. I found out last week, they have some progress in the treatment area as of last week or the week before, and I don't know if it's public yet, but maybe still in the investigation stages. So prayers for a cure.
Well said.
Yeah, I'd like to invite all council. Chris, will you accept?
I just want to say, this isn't a sad thing. This is a great thing. All the medicine they have now for cancer is amazing. So it's a hopeful thing, and it's a thing that you can live with cancer. You can live a healthy life with cancer. I just got finished pickleball playing. I won two games, lost two.
That's good.
Okay, so, yeah.
I taught pickleball about 35 years ago. Yeah, so it's gone a long way since then. Okay.
All right, everybody squeeze in. Perfect. Okay. Ready? Here in three, two, one.
Okay, we got her.
Oops.
Oh, here we go. Let's do our pose.
So just a reminder, Saturday, 8:00 AM, and then we'll have, it'll be a great, enjoyable, uplifting time. So we invite everyone to join. And with that, with, you know, excuse me, I'm going to take my bride out to dinner and I'll turn my department over.
Drop the hook. There you go. Okay, police chief reports. Chief?
All right, council, I agree with Chris in what she said, that it's not necessarily time for sadness, time for celebration. My father-in-law's been fighting cancer for the last 12 years. And just like Chris, I think one of the biggest contributing factor to his success to continue to battle this back is that he keeps moving and doesn't really think about it. He just lives his life every day like he doesn't have it. He just recently had a stroke, but yet, you know, he's managing to get on his tractor. So he just keeps pushing forward. We can't formulate perfect sentences, but he manages to go out and drive a tractor around. So, you know what? God bless him. So one of the things that we wanted to do today, and it was important to our PD Patrol folks, to recognize Father Wes. Father Wes continues to be a resource that we can go to in the middle of the night, weekends, holidays, when other folks aren't around and we need resources for people. Shelter, food, transportation, you know, to get to a different city sometimes because they get stuck here in Tehachapi because of the way we're on the 58. And I think he always answers the call. So he and I have had trouble connecting lately because he's been heading out of town, and I've been going to some training and different stuff. But when the folks call him at night, he's there, he helps, he responds. And I think we just called you today, didn't we?
I had a call yesterday.
Okay, yesterday. Yeah, so we got, you know, we got some more assistance. And to a police department, to be able to have someone in the community that you can reach out to immediately and start helping give resources is very important, and we have that here in Father Wes. So we wanted to present him with a certificate of recognition for his continued support for the Tehachapi Police Department and in turn translates to the city of Tehachapi as well. So if we can give Father Wes a round of applause, please.
Oh, goodie. Feel like I'm between two walls.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bless you.
God bless you.
Thank you so much. Great to see you too. Thank you, chief.
Absolutely.
Amen.
Thank you.
Couple things before I-
Yeah, I want to say something.
Yeah, first of all, well, there's this old prior joke about a pastor who was working so hard and never talked about himself, just did the job and took care of a lot of folks. And his church decided to give him an award for his humility. And the moment he accepted it, he had to give it back. And in this case, I'm receiving this really on behalf of my congregation. Because if it weren't for the members of St. Jude's in the mountains, there's no way I could do any of this. They're the ones who pay my salary. They're the ones that are behind me when I need some help. I need to call somebody for some extra help. They're there. And so it's really an award, I would argue, not really myself, really for the congregation. They're amazing folks. I always tell folks we're a hospital, not a courthouse. And I also remind folks that we're also a hospital, not a spa. And so folks come to church, get healed, and this is partly how we do that. Also, on behalf of the KCSO, Kern County Sheriff's Office, what enabled me to do this is two things. One, my experience with the National Guard. As a chaplain in the National Guard for 17 years, retired from that about five years ago. They gave me the skill set. But also with the KCSO, working with that team. That allowed me to do a lot of mutual support for the police department. And so I give them a lot of credit as well, and we're still on the mission. And mindful of that, I want to recognize the police officers that are with us today. Can I have them over here? This is the chaplain's coin from Kern County Sheriff's Department. And we give these to police officers and members of sheriff's office who really go beyond and help in a capacity of pastoral care. I'd argue that our first responders, particularly our law enforcement, are more social workers in terms of helping people in crisis even more than a lot of our clergy. And it is phenomenal work they do. And so thank you. These guys find the folks who are facing life-changing crises. And they get them into a place where there can be life-changing care. And we've seen several cases where folk got broken down in this town with nowhere to go, no one to call on, no help at all, and the community rallied. This was simply a catalyst. I'm simply a catalyst. And in the rallying, these folks get back on their feet and get on their way and get where they need to be or get established in this town in a healthy fashion. And I want to thank you all for allowing that to happen through this police department and for also your respective support of the clergy in this town. So may the Lord bless you.
I'm glad that Father Claire-
Of course.
Well, I'm glad that Father Claire mentioned he's retired military as well, so. Okay, anything else? Okay. The consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contrasversal by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Do we have any councils, public? Are there any of you with an item that you would like removed from the consent agenda? Anyone? Council?
I'll make the motion to approve.
One second.
Tori?
John? Yes. Davies?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Pogan Corp?
Yes.
It's a 4-0 vote to approve the consent agenda.
All right, public comment? Do I have anybody from the audience? Do we have any written?
No.
Nope. Okay. City clerk reports?
We're going to go to Development Services.
Where are we?
I don't see.
Oh, all the way down there. Development Services reports?
Good evening, Mayor Pogan Corp and council.
Good evening.
I've got a couple items for you tonight. Two ordinances to revise the Tehachapi Municipal Code. This will be the first reading for both ordinances. So this first one we're starting off with is regarding residential rental property inspection requirements. And there's four main topics that it covers. Inspection of substandard conditions, registration of rental properties with the city, good faith crime prevention by landlords, and business taxes for rental properties. So Development Services in the police department handle complaints from tenants of rental properties for substandard conditions. And by that, I mean potential health and life safety concerns like no hot water, mold, roof leaks, fire damage, things of that nature. When we get those kinds of complaints, we go out, do an inspection, and if there's a violation, we contact the landlord, let him know this is what's going on. Need to get this fixed. In 2023, the state of California passed 8548, which requires cities to adopt policies and procedures specifically for inspecting multifamily housing when a violation appears to affect other units. So the first thing we're looking to do with this ordinance is codify our inspection procedure for multifamily housing. Currently, as I said, we have an inspection procedure in place. It is complaint-based. So we don't do annual inspections of rental properties. We wait till somebody calls us, and that's not going to change. What it does is just codify our procedure so, for transparency's sake, for the public, so they'll know how we handle those complaints when we go out. So typically, what we do in that case is we go out. If there's something like fire damage, it looks like it may have spread into another apartment, then we go and knock on the door, ask, hey, can we take a look? And that moves us on to the second topic, which is registration of rental properties. When we find a violation, we need to know who to contact. And that's where this comes in. So what we, one item we'd be asking to do in this ordinance is to require landlords to register rental properties with the city. Now, this isn't going to be, we're not going to go out hunting for people. Landlords pushing them. This will be a phased approach. Just as they come in, we'll let them know to get this on the books. And the whole purpose of this is to give us a contact person for who to call if an issue arises. Whether that be landlord, property manager, whoever, we just need to know who to contact if there's an issue with the property. Moving on to good faith crime prevention, this is just a clause letting landlords know we expect them to keep an eye on their property to make a good faith effort to keep crime from occurring on their property. This isn't a quote-unquote "crime-free" clause. This is just letting them know, don't be an absentee landlord, keep an eye on your property. We want to keep this a clean and safe town for everyone. Finally, the last item is business taxes. So currently, every business is required to pay a business tax to operate within city limits except for landlords of one, two, and three-unit residential rental properties. So what we're looking to do is place them on the same playing field as other businesses by requiring an annual business tax for residential rental properties. As of 2002, the municipal code requires owners of apartment complexes with four or more units to pay a business tax annually of $40 plus $5 for each unit. We're looking to just keep it simple. And so what we're proposing is a $40 flat annual fee for rental units of one to three units. So.
Do they have to be attached? I'm sorry. Or it has to be, it's going to be all separate units?
Right. If it's like a duplex or triplex, as long as they're all on the same lot.
Okay.
Lastly, because these changes are administrative and regulatory in nature and do not have any physical impact on the environment, this ordinance is exempt from CEQA pursuant to the general rule. But that SAP recommendation is to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the Tehachapi Municipal Code to adopt rental registration and inspection regulations, propose CMC Chapter 8.72, and make related changes to business license taxes for apartment complexes, CMC Chapter 5.08, and make finding exemption from the California Environmental Equality Act. These two ordinances were a joint effort between the city, Civic Law, and RWG. We actually have that from RWG here on the video call to help answer questions. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Chief wanted to say a few words as well.
As our chief building inspector, Mr. Rankin, said, this is going to be a phased approach with our landlords. I want to make it clear, especially we have members of the media here that will, you know, print this tomorrow. And I want to be clear, this is not, we're going to go out tomorrow or next week or next month and start dragging out landlords to pay a business tax fee. This is going to be a phased approach. We're going to work with them. We're going to educate and continue to do what we do. But this is a tool that gives us a resource to continue to keep Tehachapi as the nicest city in Kern County with the lowest crime rate because a lot of our landlords will flip properties on a regular basis. We have no clue who they are. It takes months at a time for Kern County's GIS and mapping network to catch up sometimes, and we have multiple violations on properties, and then we find out a landlord actually owns 10 or 15, not just two. So this will give us a tool in our toolbox to help keep our city the way it is and at the same time, help us protect those that live in these rental properties because generally, that is the most of our affordable housing within the city of Tehachapi is our rental properties. And as of last year, like Mr. Rankin stated, we are required now to have a mechanism by which these local renters can make complaints to the city that we follow up on and help them get a resolution or point them in the right direction for resources to handle their grievances with landlords. And in order to do that, we need to know who the landlords are. And just like we do every other business in town, this is our first step in doing that and getting people into compliance and keep our city the way it is. So I hope council will take that in consideration. If you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer it.
Do I have any public comments? Council?
Yeah, chief, so a fourplex, would that be considered four units or one unit?
A fourplex would be considered four units.
Four units, even though it's on the same roof, basically, you know, but, okay, so.
So it'd be the $40 and I think five for each additional unit?
Okay, all right.
Yeah. So it's not going to be 200, it'd be 40, 15, 65.
Sixty bucks.
Yeah, 60 bucks.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Does that apply just to a complex or?
No, residential also.
Is it residential because, you know, you have some of these houses that-
Oh, we have some landlords-
Right up the street that need help.
Correct. And we've been working with those, especially for mold and things like that that the state now requires us to be more involved than they have been in the past. And again, it gives us a mechanism. You know, we have some landlords that own 15, 20 properties in town, maybe more. And sometimes they'll sell 10 or they'll sell five. We've been working with a landlord recently, and we didn't realize that they had split a land trust among their own families. So one member now has five houses. One has 10, and the other one has like three or four. So we thought we were citing the right one, only to turn around and find out, no, that had been split, you know, a year ago. But, you know, Kern County doesn't always catch up. So this is a mechanism for us to kind of take a little more control of that and know what's going on in our city and who we can go to to get issues resolved.
Good question. Maintenance of the property. You go around town, individual property owners that's not a rental have issues, but then do we have the same standards for rental property, like an individual house?
Every property will be treated the same.
Is that something that the public can just say, look, they need to maintain their property because it's a mess? Just go in and onto our online-
On our Civic Plus?
On the Civic List.
They do daily, Mr. Smith, and we respond to them. And if my code enforcement officers don't, I respond to them myself. And so I give them an update on where we're at and what's going on and move from there. And it seems to work, you know, pretty well, and some of ours are what we see when we're driving around. But, and, you know, I'd like folks to know, a lot of our responses to residents is in town, are complaint-generated. It's not just, you know, the chief sees something or our code guys or building or public works. It's complaint-generated by our citizens who want a certain way of life. And they expect us to provide that for them.
Because a couple years ago, we had an issue by the Jacobson Junior High neighborhood. Once it was finally resolved with our code enforcement actions on this particular residence, they were elated. Sometimes they just suffer in silence because, you know, what can they do? But we wanted to let people know that there is an avenue to file a complaint, and it will- And it will get, it will get answered.
Yes.
And addressed.
And if not, there's a mechanism in that, in that written complaint or at the front desk to reach out to me and because code falls directly under me. And I am happy to say that I hope council moves forward with this because we are finding now, working with our landlords who have multiple properties. Sometimes they don't live here, like Mr. Rankin said, and they don't understand what our expectations are. It's okay where, you know, they own properties down south or up north, but that standard is okay, but it's not okay here. And so a lot of times when we get them here onsite, start working with them and letting them know what our expectations are. We're actually getting some results without being punitive. Which is ultimately the goal. We don't want to be punitive, we just want compliance.
I can't imagine any other city bigger than us would say it's okay to have property not maintained.
That's correct.
That might be their line of defense, but
Right.
They will be informed that we have our standards here and they need to be met. How many rentals do we have in the city?
Oh, gosh.
That's one question we can't really answer.
Yeah.
Per this ordinance.
Well, we can estimate, we have a
Roughly twenty percent of our current residences and apartments, yeah.
Buildings, twenty percent of the structures.
Yeah, so this will give us a tool to kind of also know that too. Because a lot of them, they are renting it as a business.
Yeah.
You know, they're no different than, you know, Jersey Mike's or anybody else who has to, you know, pays fees and taxes to do business in town.
May be surprised how much time and effort chief, his code enforcement officer, Joe and the support staff, legal team spends on these issues. More time than we really want to or need to. Some of the, let's say, projects are heartbreaking. They're heartbreaking as to what the landlord, how they're treating their tenants. You know, you have to typically first month, last month, security deposit, that kind of stuff. But then you have an issue, they're heater, the furnace is not working, or they have a leaky roof. They're really caught because it's hard to come up with that kind of cash. And so they don't want to be kicked out, so they suffer in silence. And then the broken window theory, right? One property starts to look bad and another, it's just, it's not fair. We're better than that. And that's why we put this together with this, with chief and Joe and our legal team and many others. Because we feel like we could be more efficient and continue to add to our quality of life. So I'll remind council, items number six and seven will need just a simple motion to introduce them. We're not taking any action tonight. It'll be brought back to you at the next regularly scheduled meeting for adoption. So when we adopt ordinances, they're part of the municipal code. It requires two, two sessions. So tonight is adoption only.
I'd have to say kudos to our code enforcement personnel and police department for that. I've gone on Civic Plus, be on a walk. The same trailers parked in the street for time after time. It's chronic offenders, it seems like. But you get a response from the code enforcement, you get a response that they're following up. Sometimes it takes a while for it to be rectified. But they do get the message eventually. And they, they know the game of how long they can get away with what they're doing wrong. And they usually know, anyway. But thank you to code enforcement for work they're doing.
Would you need a vote to approve the adoption?
Alright, I'll make a motion to introduce, as read by title, only items six and seven.
And I'll second. Okay, Sean?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
In public court.
Yeah.
So four zero vote to approve the first reading. We're going to do them together or is that what?
Six, that's it, yes.
You read number seven?
I haven't read number seven.
That's number six.
Well, that's already approved, thank you. I'll make it quick. So again, this is another first reading of an ordinance revising the municipal code. This is going to cover administrative fines, short-term rentals, garbage and rubbish, and parking space compliance. So making a few changes to the administrative citation chapter. That's sections 1.20 and 1.16 of the municipal code. So currently, section 1.20 establishes procedures for prosecuting violations of the code. And what the code says right now is code violations should be prosecuted as a misdemeanor unless specifically made an infraction by ordinance. So what we're looking to do is revise the code to give police officers more discretion to treat violations as either misdemeanor, if it's a more serious offense, or a repeat offender, or just an infraction if it's something small. Section 1.20 and other sections of the code also currently specify fine amounts for violations of the code. So if we ever wanted to update those fines, we'd need an ordinance. So what we're looking to do is change the code to allow the council to update these fines as needed via resolution instead of via ordinance. And so we have a resolution that originally, it's mentioned in the staff report. We're not going to bring it up for a vote this evening because it's, it doesn't really need to be voted on until the ordinance is actually voted on. So we'll bring it up at next meeting for, for a vote. But just wanted to bring it up to kind of give that description. The resolution includes a, a schedule of fines and penalties for various violations, general code violations, building and safety violations, fireworks. We're not changing any of the, any of the fines at this time. We're just bringing up that resolution to help establish that process of setting fines via resolution instead of via ordinance. Section 1.16 establishes procedures for issuing citations. I won't dive too much into the weeds here, but the changes we're making are just bringing ourselves into compliance with the government code. It'll clarify the code language a little bit to specify how citations are written, what information needs to be on the site, how they're going to be served. And it also reaffirms that that fine amount can be set by resolution by the council. And then it also revises the appeals process, which would be by an administrative hearing held by a hearing officer. The hearing officer will hear both sides, hear the officer's story, hear the property owner's story, give a written decision. If the opponent doesn't like the decision, then their next stop would be the court. Moving on to short-term rentals. As you're probably aware, the municipal code already requires a permit to operate a short-term rental within the city limits. And establishes policies and procedures for issuing those permits. These regulations were established to enforce transient occupancy tax, to safeguard the peace and quiet of residential neighborhoods, and to protect the health and safety of short-term rental guests. That's all going good. In the meantime, the police department has received calls for service to to some short-term rentals. There's the old story, somebody rents one out, throws a wild party, leaves trash everywhere. Disturbs the peace and quiet that you expect in a residential neighborhood. Downtown Tatchpe does, also has a high expectation of peace and quiet. But on the other hand, it's, it's center of Tatchpe. You have businesses right next to residences. We have festivals, concerts, farmers markets. It's a little, there's a little more activity going on downtown. And so, and here at Development Services, we feel this would be the most appropriate place to keep short-term rentals. So what we're proposing to do is, going forward, limit the issuance of new short-term rentals to the downtown area. Which is depicted here on this map. It's the same zone that is defined in the sign code for the downtown area. It's going from Mill Street up to H Street, over to Snyder, and cuts down to C Street. Existing permits issued outside of the downtown area would be grandfathered in. As long as they remain in good standing with the city, keep renewing your permit. Don't throw any crazy parties. And you'll be good to go. Couple other little procedural changes regarding short-term rentals, I won't go too much into them. Currently, the code requires or prohibits advertising a short-term rental without a permit. A common thing that we run into is sometimes property owners will advertise their property on a website like Airbnb or Verbo, even though they don't have a permit. When we talk to them, they go, oh, well, those websites offer long-term rentals too. So what we're looking to do is clarify the code and say, if the place where you're advertising offers short-term rentals, you can't advertise there unless you have a short-term rental permit. There's plenty of legit places to advertise long-term rentals. And, and so we'd be looking to push them to those areas so they don't secretly have short-term rentals coming in. Because we've seen, we've seen reviews on, for some of those properties, when they tell us it's just a long-term rental. We look at the reviews and we see two-night stay, three-night stay. So they're just using it as a method to circumvent the code. We're just looking to clarify the code to hopefully stop that from happening. Few other procedural changes include defining the use of short-term rentals, just to avoid ambiguity. Requiring a permit of the permanent applicant when they come in and apply, just to provide a clearer record of the property owner. Requiring the life safety inspection that I perform for short-term rentals to be scheduled when they come in to apply. As opposed to saying, call within thirty days. It's just to save staff time, both for us and for the applicant. Let's just make it easy and schedule the inspection right now while you're here. Changing the annual deadline of permits to June 30th. Again, just for simplicity. That way, there's a clear picture both for staff and for property owners that June 30th is when they need to renew. And clarifying that short-term rentals with two or more bedrooms are deemed to offer lodging for five or more persons and are subject to transient occupancy tax. So again, that's just to clarify, draw that line in the sand and say, if your short-term rental has two or more bedrooms, you're presumed to be able to house five people and you need to pay TOT. Moving on to garbage and rubbish regulations. A common problem encountered by the PE is cr- ravens and wind scattering trash everywhere. Property owners don't want to pick it up, you know, it's on the neighbor's property. So we're looking to change the code to require, if your, if your trash blows out of your can, blows into the street, blows on the neighbor's property, it's still your trash, you need to pick it up, help keep the city clean. If you're a business, you have a trash enclosure with a dumpster, keep the dumpster inside and close so the ravens don't get in it and scatter the trash everywhere, and pick up your trash if they do. For residential property owners or anyone who keeps their trash cans down to the curb, or takes their trash cans down to the curb for trash day. If it's not trash day, the code requires you to bring your can up. Keep it by your house or anywhere out of front setback. Keep it off the curb. Just keep our streets clean and front yards looking nice. Final items, parking space compliance. So I'm sure you're all aware, some city streets in downtown area have painted parking spaces. F Street, Robinson, Green Street has diagonal parking spaces. But there's nothing in our code that, that requires people to park in those spaces. So what we're looking to do is put a clause in the code that says, if you park in those spaces, stay between the lines. If not, you may get a ticket from the PE.
No more two, no more two-space parking or the person that comes down on Green Street takes up three spaces. By parking in the middle and going diagonal because they don't want anybody next to their car.
Really?
Oh, yeah. That's going to give us another tool in the toolbox. Because our parking downtown is limited. And I think we're very gracious with how we enforce it and how the Public Works and folks maintain it. So this is just a tool in our toolbox to make people respect it.
And again, because these changes are administrative and regulatory in nature and do not have any physical impact on the environment, this ordinance is exempt from CEQA pursuant to the general rule. So that staff recommendation is to approve the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Tatchpe, California. Amending the Tatchpe Municipal Code to update various provisions, including provisions pertaining to administrative fines, penalties, and enforcement of code violations. TMC chapters 1.16 and 1.20. Update short-term rental regulations, TMC Chapter 8.68. Revised garbage and rubbish regulations, TMC Chapter 8.04. Amend parking space compliance regulations, TMC Chapter 10.28. And make a finding of exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. So that, that's all I got, chief. If you want, do you have anything else to add?
Unless council has questions.
Do I have any questions from the public first? Then counsel?
I have a question. So this ordinance not only applies to rental homes, but also in general, all those, the violation of administrative matters, right? Any, all violation? That's what I, yeah, that's how I understood.
And by going, where we're heading, council members, going from allowing us to enforce misdemeanor or infraction is actually to the benefit of our citizens. So the way it's written now, it's at the maximum. But if it's a citizen who one, may not have a firm understanding of the ordinance they violated and maybe did it more than once after warning because they're just not clear, that allows us to take the lowest road possible instead of causing somebody to have a misdemeanor conviction technically on their record that they don't deserve. So this is something that gives us a tool in the toolbox to actually educate and, and work with people instead of going maximum enforcement.
I have a couple of questions. I want to go back to the short term. What is the definition of a short term? Three days, two days?
That's what
Anything under Less than thirty days.
Less than thirty days.
Less than thirty, and a long term, what do you consider that? That was my question as well.
Long term would be thirty days or more.
Okay. Alright. And then on the trash, every trash day, driving from my house to my father, you know, on the streets, people just overfill the trash so much, they can't avoid to make a mess. And then there's all the ravens. You know, they can't close their lid, so it's just a free, it's a heyday there on Oakwood. There's just trash everywhere. There's a lot of people just overfill their trash can and there's no way to, you know.
So we have a way to rectify that, and that's called another can. And so if you see that, and I would encourage, you know, the, the homeowners or whoever lives in the home, you know, don't overfill your can. It's actually against the rules to over, your can has to close appropriately. If it doesn't, wait till the next trash day, or the landfill's open seven days a week. But you can order more cans.
Is there any digital charge for that?
There is.
It's minimal.
It's minimal.
Sixteen bucks for three months.
You can get more recycling cans, you can get rubbish cans. So we would encourage people to take advantage of that.
So it's about thirty bucks, she said, for about three months.
Okay, so to give council some background on the trash ordinance, where this actually started, this was a, this was a project started with Jay and I. And the reason being is we were receiving numerous complaints in our restaurant corridors. And also in a few residential neighborhoods where citizens were taking their trash and they were leaving them in the public right of way. Instead of putting them back on, on their easement, on their property, they were leaving them on the public right of way. And they would just go out, put their trash in on the curb every day. So when people are walking down the street, riding bicycles, little kids, whatever, they're having to go around people's trash. And we would go out and contact them, and they're like, well, there's no ordinance that applies to that. And you're absolutely right. So we couldn't rectify, and it was numerous violations all over town. It wasn't just one specific area. And we started researching the ordinance and we realized we had no mechanism to rectify this. And so this will give us the opportunity to do that, to ask people to put them back up on the corner of your house or out of your public right of way, not in front of your front door or your living room windows.
Behind your front fence.
Correct.
Or, I mean, out of public
Yeah, at least back up on, on the other side of the house or wherever they should be. And so that's just a tool to, to let us do this.
Well, on our, on the street right around the corner from me on Maple, the people put their trash out beyond their cars
Correct.
because it will get hit otherwise trying to get to the trash can. So, yeah.
But that's for pickup, though.
Yeah, that's for pickup.
Pickup day's okay, it's what they're doing a week before when they're just leaving the trash can out there and they're walking out there and dumping the trash because they don't want to bring them in and out, basically just leave them there. And so it becomes a nuisance with birds, with getting knocked over. Sometimes we have strong winds that blow them over. Whatever the case may be, and this just gives us a tool in the toolbox to ask people to, to just comply and be a good neighbor.
Well, I always ask, or tell the neighbors, go ahead and use mine.
Yep.
Because it's never full. And sometimes I'll put theirs in mine so that the lid will close for them, but, yeah.
Talk about being a good neighbor.
And most cities that I know, homeowners' associations and, and cities, that's just the way of life. You put your trash, trash can back where it belongs.
Now, in alleys, people leave their cans in the alleys. I notice that all the time.
No, they're gonna
That's going to be okay?
No, that would be They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to come back.
I'm sorry.
They're gonna have to move.
Bring it in their yard.
Yes.
I bring mine in, but I notice any alley you walk
Right. And this is another tool, we've had that issue also because sometimes WM can't get down, or Edison can't get through, all the works can't get through, and the buses, I mean, whatever the case may be, fire, we've had, you know, issues. Again, it's just Again, it's just a, it's just an educational tool we want to use to tell people, hey, you know, this is the ordinance says, help us out here.
So do you have flyers that you're gonna tape on the cans or for violations? I mean, you know, you could see it versus forty-five minute discussion, maybe a, a note on the can or something, I just.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we could do some sort of, you know, Key's not here to help me with that, he's our communications guy, so maybe I'll talk to him about maybe putting some of these changes out once and if, and when Council approves it and we get them, get them through and ready to be ordered.
On a funny note, what, last year we had a weird wind came from the south to the north and after Waste Management picked up our cans, I went down to the end of the street, into Redwood, and I picked up, I rolled seventeen cans back up the street. So I called Waste Management and I said, hey, I just guessed. So somebody got the wrong can, I, you know, they're just all piled up down there off Cherry Lane.
One last question, sorry to belabor this, but on the short-term rentals, we're confining them to the downtown area because there's events and noise anyway, but that does not give anybody a license to violate the peace and quiet.
No, correct.
Of the downtown neighborhood within those boundaries, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Well, I think this ordinance is geared more towards, we're trying to give residential neighborhoods back to being residential, not more hotel style. Because most of the people that come here and hit a short-term rental are here because of the wineries, they're here because of the Green Street Get Down, they're here because of what occurs down here, and this is just one more of those things where we're trying to get them back to a downtown area instead of being a residential neighborhood and upsetting the peace and quiet of folks that, you know, have to get up and go to work at two, three, four in the morning, so. We're just trying, trying to even some boundaries up and, and get back to being more of a residential city versus an Airbnb city.
Okay. All right then, I will amend my, I had a motion for items six and seven, but we hadn't covered seven and what you just did. So my motion would be to approve items six and seven to introduce those ordinances as read by title only.
So seven has already been approved to introduce, so we're just talking about seven only, so if you don't.
Six was, was, but we did take a vote, did we?
We did, on six and seven.
Not seven, so we approved the introduction of six, we needed a motion to introduce seven.
As read by title only, all right.
I'll second it. Okay. So, Chung? Davies?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Owen Court?
Yes.
It's a four-zero vote to approve, thank you.
So how many short-term rentals do we have?
You're a Corey?
I had a Curioff.
Fifteen to twenty?
Not many.
Not many, but they're starting to go up as, we've had several warehouses were passed down, you know, families, parents passed, kids look somewhere else and they just think, oh, make this an Airbnb or a B R B.
Sure.
So we've seen a little bit of that.
Money maker, all right. We have the means now to control it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Council.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Pogancord. As mentioned earlier, Mr. Vaj, his beautiful wife, Chris, five-time cancer survivor. There is the breast cancer walk at Railroad Park Saturday morning, eight AM. Also, there's a bit of a health fair also, so I'd like to encourage anyone and everyone to, to come join us. Also on that day, busy day, we have, uh, the Apple Festival will be Saturday only. In past, it's been Saturday and Sunday, but this year is Saturday only. Like to thank the Simarinko team and Key and Maya, Jessica, you know, our communications team, they work hand in hand, a lot of sponsors for that event. So I believe it starts at ten o'clock in the morning on Green Street going throughout the day, lots of different activities and things, and they're bringing back more of an apple theme, which we really encourage. That same day, at the Tehachapi Events Center Rodeo Grounds, I'm sorry, that's on Sunday, is that on Sunday? Thank you. On Sunday, there's TMRA, Tehachapi Rodeo Association is hosting Touch a Truck. So this is an event that they're hosting, you know, once or twice a year where different agencies, government agencies, private agencies, they bring in vehicles to expose to children, to dump trucks, to tractors, to police cars. Our police department's gonna be there. Kern County Fire is running their helicopters. So it's just a fun event where you can bring your kids and they can talk to different professionals. And that's on, on Sunday. Uh, let's see, I want to make sure I get all that, go all the way, is that the weekend, Maya?
The carnival is.
The carnival, thank you. The carnival is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, sponsored by Tehachapi Chamber of Commerce. It's also at the Tehachapi Events Center Rodeo Grounds. So encourage participation in the carnival, I know it's a big fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce. So that's what's going on over the weekend. In this room on Wednesday, day after tomorrow, we'll be hosting our first hometown Christmas planning meeting. I believe that's at noon in this room. So we're putting together another great hometown Christmas event in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, the parade, and lots of different sponsors. So our first, first planning meeting, and we're encouraging the public to attend. Thursday is the sixteenth of October, Coffee with the Mayor. So we'd like to invite everyone to have coffee with Mayor John Pogancord on Thursday the sixteenth. Uh, switching gears a little bit, have you driven Valley Boulevard from Beach to Tucker?
Oh, yeah.
Isn't it amazing?
Oh, it's fast.
Those are moments that make me so proud. And so I know Don and Andrew and Jason, many others, pulled together that project. We've got brand-new asphalt. The contractor was spectacular, they ground the entire length one day, skipped a day, cleaned it up really nice, and then on Thursday, I believe, they repaved it just in time because it rained Friday morning. Uh, but this week, I know that they're, they're doing the raised grades, which utilities, right, whether it's water, sewer, or power, those sorts of things, there are manhole covers. And so when you repave the street, you need to raid, they call it raised grade, and so the asphalt is a little thicker, and so the concrete, they cut the asphalt out and put a concrete collar around those utility boxes or manhole covers. So they've been doing that today. I know that asphalt curbing, Mr. Smith, we've talked about this over the years, it's scheduled for this week, and, you know, schedules change, but I think on Thursday is when they're planning on doing the asphalt curbing on the north side.
On Griffin area only, right?
In that area, only. And then we have, of course, striping, that's the very last thing that they'll do. So it'll be either this week or next, so we'll get the final striping in, but very exciting project that's nearing the end. So thank you to Don, his team, and the contractor, and to, to the community also for, you know, adhering to the rules of, you know, active construction, taking a detour to build, but it's certainly worth the trouble. So thank you to everyone on that. Uh, in addition to that, so the Adonis and Road Improvements, south of the high school is currently, um, being done as we speak. So the widening there from the high school's south opinion, so widening to the west, curve better sidewalk and those things. So that's happening as we speak. I believe it's West Rock, is that right?
Yeah.
The contractor, we've used that before, they've won some bids, they're a great contractor to work with, doing a good job, they're here, they're hitting it hard, and we appreciate everybody's support on that also. The fountain at Centennial Plaza, we've been for years, been plagued with water leaks, different things, that fountain has not really performed to the standards that it should, right? And so, Tyler Napier, our Public Works Director, honed in on a contractor, we hired them. The fountain is now ending its, its completion, it may be open now, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the.
It'll be open Friday.
Friday, just in time for the Apple Festival, thank you, Tyler. And so that fountain is pretty much brand-new. So we're excited about that, to showcase that feature. And then landscaping continues to happen out at the Tehachapi Events Center Rodeo Grounds. Remember, we put in the nice fencing, threw a fencing, we put some nice mounds, we're landscaping. Andy, our, our landscape division director, he's been working, they put in all the irrigation. I know that some trees were delivered twice and he's rejected them because they did not meet his standards. That's a good thing, right? And so we've now found a different supplier and we're gonna be getting trees, evergreens, and some bushes and things, and maybe we'll plant some poppies over there, that would be a good idea. Some nice fresh dirt, it would be a good tilling. So those are some of the things that are going on in addition to lots and lots and lots of other things. So looking forward to attending the League of California Cities with Mayor Pogancord and Councilmember Davies, then a couple of staff members will be leaving tomorrow and returning on Friday. Learning all about the different things that's happening up and down the state, that the League of California Cities can, can educate us on the different sections. So thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember reports, Michael?
No, just real proud of everything that's happening around the city. I'm really happy with Valley Boulevard. Uh, had a, had a, I did have one comment and I didn't talk about it because I, I think I answered it, I hope I did it right. He goes, they're not putting an island in there. And I said, no. Am I correct? Thank you. Yeah, but no, I was real happy, everybody likes it, and just kind of driving around town, how the roads look. Uh, glad we're going after this trash, that's a big concern. I think I've talked to you many times about it and trying to educate our people about, you know, keeping their neighborhoods good. Because where I live, everybody's trash blows right in front of my, in front of my house the way their, my fencing is, so. But that's gonna be a good, good thing for our city. And other than that, I appreciate everybody's hard work and everything that they do, appreciate Mayor Pogancord and for things that she's doing, and the other council members, and our city staff, and our police department, Public Works, just happy with everybody and what they're doing for our city. That's all I have.
Phil?
Fair report from our last current Council of Governments meeting. And we, staff met, uh, Don, Greg and I, and staff, uh, met with Caltrans District Nine on Monday or Tuesday, Thursday, last Thursday. One of those days, had busy schedule. Anyway, had a really good meeting with having Caltrans in our office, listening to our, and Corey was there, thank you, uh, just going over, communicating the, the projects in our area. One of the areas, I think from the current Council of Governments, that was reported from District Nine was, one of the projects was a wrong-way signage improvements on fifty-eight and two oh two. I don't know how that could have happened on that horrible accident that someone went the wrong way on fifty-eight at that, they went down that on-ramp, I guess, or off-ramp. Anyway, there's some new signage that's gonna be going in, there's a project for that. They're still in the works for the Highway fifty-eight slab replacement project that's gonna be coming. We discussed the Mill Street Safety Project for Raised, because the, the handrails that are, the guardrails that are there are just substandard for someone that's walking there. But we were a little disappointed in the, in the timeline, it's gonna take several years, but, but the project has been identified and, and funding, I believe, is, has been identified, but it will be in a few years. They're gonna, and they have a design feature, it won't be chain link, it'll be something else that have a decorative finish, but it will protect a pedestrian walking over that overpass with the high winds, you know. A lot of people ever walk there in a windy day, it's, it's, uh, kind of jarring, but to see people with the kids in a stroller going across there. Anyway, it's, it's in the works, it's gonna be addressed. And then the, uh, the truck climbing lanes is still on schedule, it's still looking like a start time of twenty-twenty-seven, which seems like it's been forever, but.
Right.
At least we have a year at a time. And the funds we got last year from the California Transportation Commission, two-hundred-and-fifty-six million for the, the actual lane improvements, they're gonna tear out and make the highway, if you've driven from Mojave to Roseman, you know, that newer freeway was completely replaced. They take it down to base and then they pave it with asphalt and then they pave it with Portland cement. So we will get that feature from Tehachapi to Calienny Road from this funding. But they're gonna break it into three segments. One first segment of this part of the climbing, climbing lanes will be from Calienny to Hart Flat, and then I think the second segment is Hart Flat to Brum Road. Anyway, they're gonna start at the top and give, have the contractor get a feel for it, because we're gonna have one lane traffic for two to three years. You know, it's gonna be a while, so under the construction. But they're planning this, we, they've taken advice on certain things we've brought up and it's, it's moving along, things like, uh, maybe rerouting, we've talked about oversized loads coming through town, not even permitted. So in this kind of a situation, they would be have to go middle of the night or take route one-thirty-eight or something else. So they're, they're planning for this, it's, it's a monumental project for this area. Other than that, uh, and then segment from Calienny, that really steep windy area there to Hart Flat, that would be the second, probably after a year of this other one getting to that. But the truck climbing lanes in general are still on schedule and they have been making purchases of right-of-way, getting agreements on the south side of fifty-eight from Calienny up to Hart Flat, purchasing right-of-way where they need to cut into the hill more or, or have more property for the widening of the lanes. But anyway, here's proceeding.
It's worth noting, if I may, that the vast majority of the projects you're describing, and, and more, others too, actually, the repaving between here and Mojave and such, and the two oh two improvements, none of those projects are in the City of Tehachapi. However, the City of Tehachapi's leadership is working closely with Caltrans, quite frankly, pushing Caltrans for dates, for deliverables, and how can we help? And so we're meeting with Caltrans regularly. I know Maya is working on, she's a math, of all the different projects in and around our region, and we'll be publishing that here, we hope, this week. It has the different projects with timelines and everything, so people can be aware of what's coming. We're gonna have construction, you know, in some form or fashion, all the way from Caliente to Mojave over the next ten years. Hundreds of millions of dollars will be spent in our region on fifty-eight and two oh two. Way overdue, but we're happy that the City of Tehachapi, I'm very, very happy that we've been able to work hand-in-hand with Kernco and with Caltrans and with Senator Grove and others, getting these much-needed projects to the forefront. Had it not been for the City of Tehachapi and those partnerships, we would still be just talking about them.
Because this is a Caltrans project, it was brought up in two thousand and two when I first started down there. It's been over twenty years since they said, this needs to happen. This, we need truck climbing lanes starting at General Bill Road. So, anyway.
So Maya's gonna be publishing something, we hope, this week or as soon as it's ready, when it's, when it's, um, ready. And then I failed to mention earlier, Mayor Pogancord, if I may, the City of Tehachapi's Public Works Department has done a great deed, partnering with the Tehachapi Heritage League Museum, um, folks, the Arasta, am I saying that right? Tyler, Arasta?
Arstra.
Arstra, okay, say that ten times quick. Uh, it was once in Railroad Park beside the Chamber of Commerce, you remember, it used to be, the museum used to be there. And so when the museum moved to its current location on Green Street, that was kind of left, and nobody really knew what it was. It needed to be beside the museum so that the volunteers and docents could tell people what it was, right? And Tyler, what was it? What does it do? It crushes ore.
It's a primitive mining tool that was built in Larkin originally for mining up there. People from the Heritage League, Del Troy, people moved it from Water Canyon years and years ago to Railroad Park. And then we tore it apart, reconstructed it at the museum, worked in partnership with John Hammond, he was kind of our cultural expert, you know, because we're just the labor. John was instrumental, helping us, making sure that we rebuilt it properly, and his comment was, we rebuilt it more accurate than it was at Railroad Park. So I'd be, be a part of that. So yeah, definitely stop by, take a look, it's, it's pretty, now it looks like something really cool, so.
Super happy.
It's not a hundred percent done, the Heritage League has some work on there to do, but yeah, it was a great partnership.
Another great partnership, right.
Is that the stones in a circle or is that?
Yes, so if you're looking at the, the museum, it's right there on the left. You can't miss it, it's beautifully done. Kudos to the Public Works crew and also the volunteers at the museum. So swing by, say hi, let them tell you about the project and maybe make a donation to their, to their, their organization. It's a great group of people doing a great service to our community.
Helen?
I just wanted to share my, um, little joy that I felt this morning. While I was, I was walking, my, giving them my morning love, I encountered our sweeper. I, I don't know if he saw my hand, I was just so. I, I don't know if he saw my hand. I was just so glad to see, you know, city sign, but, you know, and then I was able to walk right behind the truck, which was very freshly cleaned. And it's a little thing, but I was so appreciative of nice, clean city. And I thought, I'm gonna share this with, at the meeting. And just, that was just a little joy and I felt so good. It was just so clean. And thank you.
Thank you.
I'll add on to that. Are you finished with that?
I'm done.
He does a great job. He has such accountability. He just has such pride in his work. He'll make a pass. If he sees an area that needs a second pass, he'll do, he just does it whip through.
That's right.
And if stuff gets blown out, he'll go ahead and down the Mill Street. But he's got pride in his work. So telling.
Marcos Cariel is the reflection of every single employee in the city of Tatchpe.
Yeah. He's got pride in his work. Yeah. His heart is in it. And it shows.
We told him to go sweep it in front of you so you'd have.
It was nice from me either. It was very clean.
When I hear the truck, I go and grab my blower. So if there's anything.
There's cars parked.
You're that guy. Oh, you push him out.
No, no, no. The cars are parked there. So it's just blowing out from underneath all the parked cars because they're all there. Just blow it out and he'll get it.
This time of the year, it's tough because of all the leaves.
Right. Okay. Lots of activities that are happening, happening in the city this month, next month, Christmas. And it takes a village. We cannot do this by ourselves, obviously. So all of the people out here helped make our city the way it is. It's a great city and we're very fortunate. Except. Okay. Do we have anything else? Okay, we'll be going to close session. Someone will come out and let you know what's going on. And thank you.